Order the meeting of the Brattleboro Planning Commission Monday, February 23rd, 2015 at 6:16. First order of business is to approve the minutes of January 14th.
I approve the minutes for January 14th.
All in favor? Now, as per now.
Actually, I don't know if we can approve minutes because we don't have a form for minutes.
What's the form for Kate and Mona?
Yeah, well, yeah, you don't have to have been here, you just have to believe that they're correct.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
The form, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I would like to introduce Kate Catherine Manthi.
Say it again.
Montai. Say it again. Montai. Okay. Alden. Kate.
Yeah.
That's not my last. We should introduce them, so.
Yes.
And Carolina Raque, and the last name is Golex, so it's just, it's crazy.
Okay, and then we have two other members this evening, Eric Ennis and Rachel Zaymore.
Zaymore, yeah.
Okay, Eric.
Is it Catherine?
Yeah, you came to one of the meetings.
Eric is a young gentleman, yes, but not there.
That actually may have been Kate's husband that you're talking about.
Yeah.
You call me Kate.
Yeah, I call my Kate, not Catherine.
Yeah.
Okay, any other announcements?
Um, yeah, a couple announcements, so we'll be having a meeting next Monday, March 2nd, that's our usual meeting, and I'll be getting materials out to you for tomorrow. And then there is another meeting on March 23rd because Brandy is scheduled, Brandy is our zoning consultant, so some of you've got that date, and I know we have a form for that, so.
So she's not coming again until then?
No, she'll be here next week, yeah.
Can I just check, is there a link, the hyperlink on the website to the PEF meeting schedules?
Oh, okay.
You're the second person today that said something funky with the website.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, great, we'll do something with that.
So both of those meetings are with Brandy?
Yes.
Yep.
Nope. And then the other announcement is that next Tuesday, we're going to be on the slum board, meeting with the slum board, presenting.
The land use regulation rewrite.
March 3rd.
To date, yes, March the 3rd. So the agenda hasn't come out yet in terms of where we're going to fall. Kate, this might be of interest to you-ish, but when we're scheduled to go before the select board, one of the things, it's always a little difficult to calculate is exactly when on the evening. So for those of you who've got better things to do, like be with your babies, it can be hard to commit and figure out what's going to go on. So when I see the agenda, I'll be able to take a rough, although I'm really lousy at calculating how long things go on for.
They never would make it.
Yeah, I've lost my touch.
But at least the.
This is part of, I mean, their request to have us come a few times.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that part's, anyway, it's good that they want to see us and hear from us about how things are going, and it's an opportunity for us to provide an overview to them. We provided packets of information to select board members, but it'll be an opportunity to do a slightly more visual presentation. So it would be good to see some planning commissioners there. I'm expecting Sue and I will be making the majority of the presentation, and we'll work with Liz on that, I guess, but Liz doesn't know that yet.
You need your own computer.
Yeah, so you're going to be here? Because you better have said you were going to Jersey again yesterday, but.
That's for safekeeping.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so we're all set, so do you have questions about that?
I would just like to clarify that. So you're just doing a general, like a general overview and questions you have, and this is the next step in the process.
Yes.
Yes.
Do they have their, do they have? They have a copy of the regulations, they have all the handouts that we had available to the public. We'll probably, you know, look at some of the slides that Brandy had put together and just.
Yep, that's what.
Have you got any feedback from the manager? I know he got it a little late early.
Just that he seems to be pretty happy with the way we've put the project together and is interested to see it going forward, so.
And then, okay.
Yes, in particular, the effort around public participation.
Can I ask a tangentially related question? Is there some presentation for me? It's a good question.
No, but I'm glad you brought that up. So one of the things that we'd like to do is, we have by now evolved into a little road show, and so we'd like to set that up, take the farmer's market thing and put it at the town meeting in that area next to where people go. We might have a slightly expanded one. Why would you like to be there? Monitor. Oh, we're in this different space too, actually, you know, it's, yeah.
Like the high school gym? Three hours of class, you chance.
All right, what? First town meeting. Oh, Lordy.
Okay, trying my best behavior, Kate's new here, okay, so.
It was a private working night, actually.
It's going to be in that other one, the middle school auditorium.
Enter from the back to the other side of the building?
Yeah, where you enter from the other street, you know, where we had the special town meeting last year?
Yeah, that's where we had the special town meeting, right?
Yeah, it has a stage and stuff, and so it's a little more cramped in some ways.
Yeah.
You mean it would be in the hall?
Yes, but people would have to go to the bathroom a lot, and then, so then they will see it, so that part's good.
Yeah, I think people will end up a lot in the hall. That space is not comfortable.
People, when there's break, you just, Kathy, you need to be there.
Maybe we could do shifts or something.
We can figure it out. So that you know, informational town meeting is March 16th, and then that's in the traditional place of the academy school gym, and then the actual town meeting is March 21st. And Kate.
And election day is March 3rd?
Yes.
When's the informational one again?
16th.
March 16th?
Yeah, what can I?
I just realized.
Okay, you're going to be. Most of them need some still.
No.
Just, I mean, I think the meeting is unusual this one, and anybody kind of.
Yes, upstairs. Yeah, no, it's good.
What does the change, what does the change?
All right, so something that we set up coming in the hallway.
We'll do that, in that hallway, yeah, like where the, you know, well, I don't know what you technically call that space, but where the bathrooms are.
The gym hallway thing.
Thing. Do you know these buildings? Kate, okay, so the high school is where the traditional space is for town meeting, and all planning commissioners do not go to town meeting, just town meeting members really and me. Sue doesn't go, yet. And so it's an all-day affair, it's very exciting.
For lunch.
That's right, and they decide really important things.
The high school is up near exit 1?
Yeah, on Fairground Road, near Price Chopper, so.
I think they need more town meeting.
They do need more town meeting members, so yeah, we should talk about it nicely, so if you want more information, we can give it to you later, but that's fine, so.
Are you new to town?
Oh, that's really good.
Okay, so, so back to the select board meeting.
One question, I'm not getting great audio, so I'm going to pop this in here because that will make this microphone go more to you guys, and can you speak up a little because these fans are around here?
Do you want to kill the fans?
Well, it's the fans, it's the heat.
Yeah, no.
No.
Okay, just checking.
Okay, we'll speak up, thanks, Deb.
We do have a tendency on this commission to speak quietly.
You do.
Carry a big stick. Ooh, sorry, I didn't say it. Okay, anyway, sorry.
All right.
On meeting, we're talking, okay.
Okay, so, so where were we? Oh, so.
So we'll have a presentation.
Yes, we will have a presentation, a similar version to the roadshow that we've developed for farmers market and other places that can run at the select board, and then it can also run at town meeting. If we were very conscientious, we could probably pull it together for the informational town meeting, but it's up to, you know.
I will not be.
Okay.
If we have town meeting.
I think just town meeting, town meeting, all right. We'll be competing with the kids going to Costa Rica.
For informational town meeting?
No, for the actual town meeting, you know, they're always there, right? They're the ones with the food.
Yes, that's mine. I, can you make like at least a little flyer or something, why the informational town meeting, to make sure that.
Yeah.
I think that's going to get confused.
Yeah.
Confuse people more than clarify who the planning commissioner is and what our function is and what reason should they have to town meet. I'd rather it be second, because it's all that financial information that's left to the planning committee, I think it's just going to confuse them. It's just more information that needs.
Right, okay.
We'll just do it at town meeting, town meeting. Yeah, okay, so, back to the select board meeting of next week, it won't be in this room, so just when you got ready to think that it's going to be in here, right, because it's voting day next week, Sue just reminded me.
Oh, we're voting in here.
You'll vote in here, and then the BCTV studio will be where they're doing the select board meeting from.
Upstairs.
This is going to be exciting.
Straight upstairs, on the third floor. If you come a wee bit earlier or something, you know, we'll figure it out, Kate, from our office or something, it's not, there's not that much on the left on the third floor, it's not that hard to find. But it's dark up there, okay, it's a studio, so it's a bit scary.
Sorry, we're being.
Okay, so I think, is there anything else that we need to discuss?
No.
Good, okay, are we going to move on?
Yes.
Okay, that was announcements, public comment, there was not public. The next item is village center designation, and so take it away, Sue.
Okay, so the state has, this is new for everybody, the state has two, a couple of different designations to kind of focus resources and redevelopment into downtowns and, you know, areas with existing infrastructure. So they have a designated downtown program, and they have a designated village center program, and these designations are good for about five years, and then you need to renew them. West Brattleboro has village center designation, and their designation is expiring at the end of July. So the town is interested in having that renewed, at least that's what we believe, but in order to do that, we need to amend the town plan.
And why?
There was a state law that was passed, or you know, some changes to state law passed last summer, that basically said if you are going to renew or if you're going to request designation, that it needs to be discussed in your town plan, and it needs to include a map. We talk about the downtown designation in the town plan, we don't talk about village center designation explicitly, I don't believe, but neither of them have a map in it, so that automatically makes us need to update our town plan.
Already?
Yeah.
Even though we were given.
Even though we are an award-winning town plan, yeah. So what I've prepared tonight up on the screen is kind of a template of how we can amend the town plan and fit it in in time to apply for village center designation. Amending the town plan, some of you may recall, and other of you who are new to it, is kind of a long process, there is a 30-day, there's a 30-day warrant on hearing, so.
Do we have to do our own warning for a public hearing, and then it goes back to the select board too, just like, kind of like last time, like the regular?
Yes, it does. So we really need to get started on it ASAP. So what I prepared for you in the packets that I handed out is some draft language, and what the hope is to discuss the draft language, give you a moment to read it, I've got copies of the maps that you can share and that I can put up here. The maps are where the existing designations are, and we would figure out where the best place to insert this into the town plan is, maybe it would be economic development, maybe it would be land use, if you can share, there's only three copies.
So where is it in the town plan? I mean, is it not in the town plan at all? You said it's.
No.
There is discussion of the downtown, designated downtown in the town plan, I don't have it.
Economic development?
It might be in the economic development chapter.
I'm a little stuck on understanding this.
Okay.
The VC designation that's due to June, if you turn over there at the end of May, but it has to go through all of this stuff, and then you prepare the application?
Well, we can start preparing the application at really, at any time, it's not a likely application, but it's just kind of showing that we can get it adopted and then have plenty of time to prepare.
And then the downtown meeting?
Yes, that's the downtown board.
That's a state.
Which is a state level meeting, and so once we have a full application packet, which we submit on July 6th, about three weeks later, there's the downtown meeting, which is in Montpelier, and we would need to go before that board and be able to answer any questions that they might have about the renewal of the.
And see if early is being intended, or if it craps out at the end of July?
Yes.
They meet once a month, so, I mean, that meets the timeframe.
So village center is different than downtown?
Yes.
Yes, but it's the same board, the so-called downtown board that issues both designations.
So that will all be done in July?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could have maybe, we need that amount of time for warning, the warning process, due to the need to amend the town plan.
Yeah.
That's the.
That's the kicker.
Yeah, so it's a lot of elapsed time, but it's not a lot of work. And then the June through July thing isn't very demanding workload-wise either, it's just a matter of waiting, so.
Are there any, so that, May 18th, you know, select board hearing and adoption and the WRC approval, is there actually some risk associated with that?
Yes.
Like they would say no, in which case where is that getting built in?
It's not the knownness from Windham Regional that concerns us, it's the.
Desire.
If you imagine that the existing town plan, approved and adopted as it is, is a container with a lid on it, and then you go to do this, then you take the lid off, and as soon as you take the lid off, anybody can go and scoop something out of what's in the bucket, or put something else in. So the whole thing is exposed while we're doing this.
So you just want to push the lid over?
I want to surgically insert these two maps and then shut the lid really fast. Oops, sorry.
Need to get new technology, raise a little base.
Right, yes, and do not want to open up the entire plan for everyone to revisit and reconsider, but that's what effectively happens here.
But it effectively happens for what period? I'm sorry.
What do you mean? It's open through, you know, a public comment time, anybody can, when we have the public hearings, anybody could come in and say we'd like the town plan to address.
So between warning and concluding the hearing to amend the town plan from the select board, we're vulnerable.
Between the planning commission hearing and the select board.
There was anything that somebody else added, potentially.
Right, or, yeah.
Right, I mean, it's hard to say from where we sit, because we.
This is what we're focused on, so we're going to stay.
If we want to meet the deadline for village center designation, then we need to stick to the schedule, and so.
Right, that'll be one of the major impetuses for shutting off.
The reason for opening it is for this.
This, and this only.
And you can, you can start preparing, can you prepare the application before they're going to process?
Sure. But we can't really submit it until we have the adopted town plan, because we need certain statements.
Right.
Probably all right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me throw it out.
No, I'm glad that you brought that point, because we're all going to have to work hard at those key points to make sure that everybody stays focused and on track, and there's no wandering off.
And how, I was sort of asking.
No, you've got, ask great questions.
So in terms of like the town plan, it's renewed, how many, it's renewed on what cycle?
Five years.
Five years. So there's no.
This, yes, this is dumb also, because what it means is that, well, it's dumb and not so dumb, we reset the expiration date, so it will now be June 2020.
Oh, so then it's not 2020.
Which is a.
That's cool.
Yeah.
So opening it is like a new cycle, you're just, you're reviewing it prematurely, basically, and then it starts.
Right, so the state, in their wisdom, thought that this was a really good idea.
I'll add, it's quite expensive to do this.
Yes.
This is not insignificant, even the warning.
No, this is, this was upwards.
Award-winning town plan.
Right, we need, yes.
You promise just.
This is upwards of.
It's going to be.
Yeah, by the time we've put our time and a whole bunch of other peripheral stuff into it, you know, if we're out of this for less than $1,000, I'd be really surprised.
And can the state, we can send the bills in state?
No.
No.
Can we get a grant from the state?
No. Just even bringing that up means that we're rude and unappreciative of their efforts.
The updating the designation needs to have this thing in the town plan.
Yep, yep.
And is this any different from its previous designation?
No.
No, we're proposing the same batteries. But just so you know, the benefits of having these designations, there's a 50% state historic tax credit, there's a 50% state facade improvement credits, there's 50%, I think it's 50% code improvements, there's technological, so if you're, you know, making your building Wi-Fi or whatever, you know, a hotspot, you can get tax credits for that. There's priority consideration for certain state grants, such as the municipal planning grant. In the downtown, you have some speed and signage options that you wouldn't necessarily have.
Otherwise.
Otherwise, downtown transportation fund, so, I mean, the tax credits alone, especially in the downtown, are significant for Brattleboro. It is important to do this.
Are the people in most of Brattleboro aware of the benefits?
They're both.
The benefits, yes.
They're definitely aware of the benefits, and they're aware of the need for this process to go forth.
Oh, I'm out of curiosity, you said that the West Brattleboro participation was expiring in July of this year, when there was the downtown.
2018.
So that's also the June cycle?
Yes.
Yeah, so that would be in there then.
I think theirs is a May cycle, it's, but the point is if we're putting it in, we may as well just put it in both then.
Yes, so then we won't have to open, hopefully, we won't have to open it up again.
The law didn't go until last summer.
But there would still be a different process for the 2018 renewal.
Yes, 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 to be clear, the 2018 renewal for the downtown should not, unless they change something else, but given the current settings, should not require us to amend the town plan in 2018.
And it's, it's really better Brattleboro, that's the designated downtown.
Organization.
Yes.
So do they do the, or do you work with them?
We work with them.
Yes.
I mean, there's a lot more, for downtown designation, there's a lot more information required, because you need to have a downtown organization, and you need to have a work plan, and budget, and certain commitments, so in the past, we've worked with PABB. Village center designation does not, you don't need to have a village organization.
It's a little more basic, right.
And more questions, does the new district encompass the whole of both of these, or do we have different zones?
The village center is, I believe it corresponds, the zoning is underneath the existing.
Yeah, the village center does correspond.
It does correspond with the boundaries?
But the downtown, the urban center does not.
It might be more in line with actually what we're proposing, so.
Yeah, I think the downtown one is slightly closer now than it was before, but it's not an exact mirror.
Yeah, it does take into account Depot Street, which we're proposing would not be in the urban center, it'd be more of a mixed use.
That's what that little, this little orange bit at the top.
Yeah, yeah, right. Now, and the key point about that is, is that the process for changing the boundaries of the downtown, because it has a downtown organization, association, associated with it, is quite a bit more work probably than might, than immediately meets the eye. So in other words.
No, I'm just wondering if the zoning, since we're doing the zoning, if there's enough justification that the zone should match the downtown?
I don't, I don't think, I don't see any problems, and actually, yeah, I think that we don't have a problem with our proposed zoning, and especially in that Depot Street area, I mean, in most of the applications, that's kind of been talked about as a redevelopment area, and currently it's zoned industrial, so we're actually moving it more towards.
The mixed use of it.
Yeah, so I think we're fine on that.
Yeah, it doesn't, in my mind at least, as a planner, there doesn't have to be a one-for-one correspondence between the downtown designation and the zoning districts that comprise the downtown.
On this map, I'm a little confused, you have village center district within the box, and then there's village center zoning district, what's the difference between those two things?
Oh.
Is it the same?
They are the same.
They are the same.
They are, they are the same.
For the village center, they are identical.
Oh, all right. It just looks like.
Well, I think.
The key, it's like you're trying to delineate two different things, and I'm a little confused.
Well, I think the only, in the village, the zoning district, actually though, you can see down by academy school, it doesn't include academy school, that's one difference.
All right.
And a little bit on Glen Street, but.
So.
And part of that is, never mind, I don't really like that, so.
So which is, which one are we working to?
We would put both of these maps, or some similar version of these maps, into the town plan, and I wrote some language that I'm suggesting, I can probably tell you where it might be best, but thinking maybe economic development chapter.
The one that has to be renewed, is that the one that's in the black box, or is that the one that includes?
It's the shaded yellow.
It's the shaded yellow, yeah.
Yeah, in the black box, so it's in the black box.
Yes.
So it's a little bit more than the.
Yes.
The village center zoning district thing, that's the blue dotted line.
And then these are reflecting, or at least, wow, this is reflecting the current zoning?
No, not necessarily, it's more reflecting the historic development pattern, and where you have kind of a concentration.
No, 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 I mean the actual this map, like this is referencing the current zoning, right?
Yes.
So in terms of the timing of zoning changes within?
That won't be showing in the, whatever we put in the town plan won't include that small.
It's in.
Okay, I don't, sorry, it'll just be that.
For us.
All right, they were the maps I had on hand.
Right, right, but yes, opening the town plan in the middle of trying to do a zoning rewrite, it's not my idea, it's fine.
All right, so are we all set then?
Thank you, we'll need extra work for you guys, so thank you.
Did you want to go through this?
I'm happy, I think comments would be useful if we have a moment to take a look at the language.
The only, and there were two things I noticed, so like, in the first paragraph, it ends with and space and then period, so I don't know if something's missing, or.
Probably, in the first paragraph?
Yeah, the historic facade code technology and.
Oh, yeah, the and should be deleted.
And then the, in the third paragraph, you have that sentence that says, "Over 1.4 million has been accessed by property owners in downtown since 2005 to improve buildings", is that, I mean, you're talking about West Brattleboro buildings, is that downtown, or is it West Brattleboro?
No, in the downtown, I am a little bit, so I'm talking about the benefits of it, yeah, it's kind of, it should probably be.
Who put that in for instance?
Yeah, because it comes right after the, it comes in between two sentences about West Brattleboro, so I.
Yeah.
It's in the wrong.
Oh, so you're using that, I see. So you're trying to use that as an example of the tax benefits utilized in the downtown that might be utilized in West Rattleboro Village once that designation?
No.
I think I was, I was moving things around a lot, and it really was just a leftover, and it probably should go into the paragraph above it.
Okay, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, is that what you think?
Yeah, that's what I think, because the first paragraph is about downtown.
Yeah.
Or the second paragraph is, the third one is about the village.
So the point here is that there are historic tax credits available to property owners in both the village center and the downtown. And in the downtown in particular, it's been a very effective tool for ensuring that buildings are renovated sympathetically and new uses are found for them. Including the Brooks House, for instance, was a major beneficiary of the historic tax credit program, so, you know, it's very clear the benefit. In West Rattleboro Village, there are some structures that are eligible for historic tax credits also, but we've had less take-up of historic tax credits in West Rattleboro Village. And, you know, the, those buildings are eligible and the village center makes them eligible, so, in the overall scheme of the policy that the state has and we're participant in, it's to encourage sympathetic or appropriate development in these designated centers, rather than lose the buildings because we don't have the means to maintain them.
So I'm starting to jump in.
No, it's okay.
But if we already had a designation in West Rattleboro, there wasn't a lot of resources.
Can you speak a little louder, I can't hear you, sorry.
If, if we already had a designation in West Rattleboro Village Center and there wasn't a lot of use of the resources that made available, is it, is it for us to think about? How they could, what ways we can encourage those to be used?
I think in a lot of ways, planning is kind of a way to put these things in place and who hopes that people can use them, but probably education, something else, something they can do.
Right.
Yeah, I think that, I think there's probably a little bit more awareness, or at least attempt at educating property owners in the village, Wyndham Regional Commission has done some work and there's actually meetings tonight.
There's a meeting there tonight, and it's, and the topic is economic development, focusing on the village, and the town manager is present and some other people from Wyndham Regional and other organizations, so, yeah, there is, there is, I think, a good outreach effort that's been in place, and it's been in place for some time, and I think that it's partly what Liz is saying too, when an opportunity arises, I think people will be in a situation to take advantage of it, so, and we hope that they do. I, in fact, the Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust building right on the eastern edge of the village.
The Ann Wilder Richards?
No.
Ann Richards?
No, 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 that's Rattleboro Housing Authority.
Oh, sorry.
The mustardy yellow one on the eastern side.
Different rooms in it?
Yep.
Oh.
It's a rooming house. I don't know if that didn't take advantage of some preferences, so, yeah, I think
Because that all got renewed.
Right.
Inside, we got.
I think, I think there's opportunity to be better at explaining the benefits, but I think in the end, it takes the property owner to want to utilize the program.
Well, and that could just be like a lot, you know, cultural change, I, I mean, it's like
Yeah.
Seven years plus.
I think Very few, I think there's been very little property ownership change in the village.
So you characterize, like, the downtown districts taking better advantage, at least to date, than West Rattleboro, would you say the downtown district hasn't taken any good advantage of things as they should be, or is that?
I think there's room for improvement, I think, I think there's been a long history focused on Main Street in particular, between the, you know, Key Bank in the northern end and Malfunction Junction in the south, to do facades and do a whole bunch of minor building upgrades, including things that are pretty arcane, like sprinkler systems or elevators or something, but that is still very important. And I think that there's opportunity for taking advantage of it a little bit further away from Main Street to some extent, so, yeah. And I think that an effective downtown organization and some heat in the market, and you can get more take-up, but basically, need somebody who wants to do something and has got resources that they're on, it's easy to say, oh, there's, there's tax credits, but you still have to have the cash upfront to be able to do it, you know, and then you get the credit, right? So
The downtown organization sponsored from the historic renovation also to talk about the tax credits.
Right. I would say most people in the downtown are aware of the existence of the program, it's not, that's not the problem, it's the making it work problem.
And the town has taken advantage of the downtown transportation fund and some of the, some of the grant.
There's been a lot as well, at least since I've been, I mean, I moved back in nine years long, and there's been just a lot of focus in that, in these, excuse me, twenty-some odd years, whereas the West Rattleboro Association is, is newer. You know, when we were, when I first came on the planning commission, they were just a pretty new organization.
Oh, so, so there is an association for West Rattleboro?
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, a group of citizens have sponsored a lot of very interesting things, they did a smart growth workshop, they, you know, they, we go to them and we have presentations to make and for informational meetings and
Same, have like a month
Yeah, that sort of education.
Right.
They've done kind of green up things and
Yeah.
flowers and green in there, yeah. But it's new, it's newer, it's still in there.
I don't know, they've been around for a while now.
Yeah, ten, it's been ten years, but not as long as the downtown sectors.
It's, it's different, it's more of a volunteer
Right.
Association, whereas the Building a Better Rattleboro actually has funding.
And for a volunteer organization, I feel like they're pretty active and pretty
Yep.
concerned about that part, I think it's great.
All right, so how do I question the answer?
So next week I, I'm thinking, at this point, I'm thinking economic development, but maybe we'll talk a little bit about that this week and we'll
I think we should have a whole chapter devoted to designations.
Then we could put, organizationally, that might be easier. We'll, I'll let you know last week, next week.
I think you should run the pen to number like last week.
Yeah, I really love it, so nice.
Jack, can I do that?
I mean, we're talking about, well, no, it's going to be five years, right? So
This is what I mean, it gets, the thousand dollars was well before you take into account the printing costs.
Your next decision about, I mean, is this, is this part of, can this be part of the general conversation?
Other things would just add those, like the West Rattleboro
Yeah, don't.
Not so good, huh?
Yeah, I think it's gonna have to go in.
It's better to forget it.
Yikes.
Good thing is, we didn't do a massive print run, we mostly made that digital, so.
I think party to reports that have to insert to the page without unwinding, just to
Right. I was thinking of finding somebody to unwind every one of those and then insert the page and put it back in again. Good.
Won't be any of mine.
Well, do you think it would be mine?
What do they do on all those roll nights?
All right.
Call me a printer.
Okay. Land use regulation work session. So, I'm sure you all know where we met Kate, we have a large number of, a couple of gaps, we have one.
Yeah, we, in your packets that I handed you, there's kind of a listing of the variety of the comments that we received.
Oh, that's what this is, huh?
Yeah, I mean, we had lots of conversations, especially at the drop-in center, with stuff that maybe weren't related to the zoning, so those didn't necessarily make it in here. But we wanted to share these comments with you. And then maybe take a look at some of the zoning districts, that, there seemed to be a couple that came up. You know, more than, more than one time, and thought maybe we could take a look at some of the boundaries.
So do you wanna go?
I like those for us.
Sure. Well, if we wanna, so if we're sticking to kind of, do we wanna get into uses or just the district? I know with Brandy next week, we're gonna be talking about the mixed use district kind of specifically, I do wanna look at some of the boundaries tonight, particularly on Canal Street. But, so I don't know if we really wanna get into uses and dimensional standards on, on mixed use, I wasn't necessarily prepared to do that because I know she was kind of reworking that, that seemed to be
You, you take us on a journey.
All right, so let's start with, I guess, comment number two, which is the water and recreation district on Route thirty.
You can. It's good.
So, um, the water and recreational district basically goes from the Retreat Meadows on the east, all the way north to the West River playing fields, and there's some office building down here around Route thirty. And so the comment was, it was felt that the office uses, so, let me see if I can bring in street view so you can see it, that's the playing field in the back here.
It looks like he's speeding when you do that.
I think it's a little slow in here to
He's really slow.
I seem to remember this.
Yeah, there you go, it's beautiful.
Yeah, the old Tom and Sally's, these are some of the buildings here, some offices.
Building that Natalie Blake and
Yeah, that's the old Tom and Sally's.
Yeah.
There was a comment about this being in the water and recreational zoning district, and felt that there, it's currently in a commercial office zoning district, and it was felt that there, that more commercial uses should be allowed than is currently allowed in the water and recreation, for example, I think that this would be a great place for a gas station.
What's the original rationale for putting this area in the water and recreation district?
Um, that if you Yeah, there's definitely that, it's in the floodplain, if, immediately behind those buildings is the West River, and immediately to the south of these buildings is the relatively new West River playing fields, the property owned by the town. So, character-wise, the office development and the light industry, commercial development that you see there that we just saw at street view, is more the anomaly, I would say, and originates from a time when strip kind of commercial development on state highways was an accepted practice.
So perhaps if I'm somebody driving through this area on the road, and I'm looking off to the side, and I see maybe those commercial buildings, I think maybe that's all the reason I don't necessarily think about what's been on there.
Right, I think what we're trying to do is conceive of the prop, you know, that area bounded by Route thirty, the big road that you see there, and that kind of lime green color, and the sort of boomerang shaped area as, as primarily an, a natural asset, you know, providing lots of water-based, you know, recreational access activity, and that there are some management issues associated with it being in a floodplain that mean that it's better off being dealt with that way.
I mean, there, there were a couple of other things, we, it's in a zoning district that were actually got consumed into some of the other districts, so it's commercial office now, we knew we didn't want to extend commercial or non-residential uses along Route thirty in that area. So I think the options really were to make it real residential, or this water recreation was a suggestion too, because it does allow the office uses, so it, it made it less non-conforming, I guess.
Right.
But was also part of simplifying the number of districts that we had.
So what are the uses in the water recreation district?
So the uses are So there are, an open market or a market shop would be permitted, lawn, garden, farms. It's pages, page two dash nine. Lawn, garden, or farm supplies sales would be conditional, rental or leasing, professional services, food services would be conditional. Warehousing and storage is conditional, we could have, yeah, restaurants, that kind of thing is conditional.
So the kind, so the commercial uses there would still, they're going from being allowed to being conditional, and then this change essentially?
So it's not, we're not saying that you could not be building an office place there, you would just need conditional approval to do it, which might mean that some of your design choices have to consider the floodplain? Am I, is that
No, let me, let me answer that a slightly different way, you, part of what you just, part of your statement is correct and part of your statement, not so much, so the stuff about the floodplain is pretty rigid, and that's coming from both our section of the zoning bylaw, but also the state's regulatory function when it comes to floodplain. So whatever that is, and however that gets played out, is kind of a fairly big barrier, and in fact, the state has just introduced yet a new process for delineating the area of interest along mapped waterways, rivers, and in this instance, all of that area is subject to their new so-called river corridor rule, which is much more restrictive in terms of the performance standards than, that would be the guiding, that would be the most difficult thing to, to, that would be the most difficult hurdle to clear. And in fact, there's a development application, you know, open out there right now, and the struggle is how to make what was a fairly straightforward project on one level conform to the new state standards on, to do with
Is that off since Irene?
Well, yeah, I mean, effectively, yes. Right. And so, and so, but then the first part of your statement, yes, actually, we expect them to be a little more sensitive to the, if you like, in a very minimalist kind of way, the purpose statement of the zoning district, which is at the front, you know, that's, which is basically the description, and responsive to a set of standards for site plan review that take into account that it's
Very possible
No, no, there's that, but the water, the water recreation function is also what we're pursuing, so, some sensitivity to its location over and above responding to the special flood hazard area requirements. Okay? So think about, there are things that you're not gonna have a choice about in terms of the way your building is designed, and the way the, the amount of impervious surface that you have, and the way you're gonna deal with things like stormwater and wastewater. So for the state now, all those things have to happen basically outside the river corridor. That ends up being pretty challenging because the whole part, the whole area is subject to river corridor. So there's now this sort of much more restrictive setting on development, period. Imagine you can meet all those special requirements that I just mentioned from the state, then we'd still be expecting you to be responsive to the purpose of the water recreation area, which is not to build something that is incongruous, given that designation, that zoning designation. So, um, some, you know, something that's responsive to the water, something that is, you know, consistent with the other uses that we're permitting or conditioning.
So like a kayak use?
Yeah, right. You know, yes, exactly.
And the uses there now
Right.
The shop or store limited to The shop or store limited to factory retail store in IN?
Industrial.
Right.
If, if you included that to be the waterfront recreation, then you would allow for the use that's there now, right?
Can you restate that please?
Isn't, isn't there a, a retail factory store in that location? Like, I don't know what took over Tom and Sally's, but isn't there something that?
Oh, it's the distillery? There is the distillery.
The, the distillery?
And they have a factory shop, don't they?
Yep. Yeah, I agree with that.
Great retail.
Blake girls will have some kind of retail.
Similar.
Well, a shopper store is conditional.
Yep.
Right.
So, I mean, they're, you know, they don't have any problems with their uses. Retail store is conditional under the existing zoning as well.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's any.
There's not a whole lot of, if, if there's not a whole lot of conflicts, then the notion that it's going to be somehow automatically non-conforming is a bit of a stretch.
I was just thinking that if we, if we change, added waterfront recreation to that next sentence that says use limited to factory retail stores in IN, to IN and WR, then you certainly include one of the main uses that's there now.
Well, it is, it's already limited to 2,000. The way it's written is you can have a shopper store. It's already limited to 2,000 square foot. It got further specific for the industrial in that it has to be a factory retail store. But, so you're saying you want it just to be limited to factory retail?
So this is broader now?
This is broader the way it's written. Yeah. One, one that jumps out to me though, that I wonder about is miscellaneous manufacturing. So it's on page two dash 10. And in the note, it said, it's the second from the bottom, it says includes handcrafted or artisanal production. It seems to me, some of those spaces are.
So.
So that, so making that an additional conditional use in that area?
Yeah, or permitted. I don't know.
That, that makes sense.
Conditional?
Conditional is fine. I mean, I, yeah.
What would we, okay, so to be clear about this, how? Miscellaneous manufacturing, without reading the definition of what that is, it seems to me there's a moderate risk that it could be a pretty large facility. And that might not be.
It can't get too large because it's an 8,000 square foot footprint.
Right, okay. That's fine.
That will control on it?
What's that?
That will be a control?
That will be a control.
Miscellaneous manufacturing is an establish it, an establishment that manufactures artisanal or handcrafted goods. Typically, these goods are custom designed and/or produced in small quantities. I mean, if somebody wanted to make furniture or.
Yeah.
I think that's fine here. I think it's fine in other parts of the water recreation districts, which basically.
Yeah, it's there.
Include the Marina area.
So what do you think, and do you think 8,000 square feet is too generous or do you think that's okay? 8,000 square feet is not exactly huge.
It's not huge. I think it's okay.
All right. I'm okay. I would be okay making it conditional because of associated circulation and packing and those kinds of things, particularly given it's water recreational.
Are there any of the other light industrial then that?
Well, I don't want mini warehouse. Um, I would be inclined to, you know how you've got, what's the rationale behind warehouse or storage? I'm somewhat surprised that that's conditional rather than just not permitted at all.
Aren't we starting to bark up a tree that's not actually the question asked?
Yeah, to some extent.
The landowner requested that this area remain in a commercial zoning district, which is.
I would argue.
Doesn't seem reasonable because the commercial zoning district has disappeared. Or that more commercial uses be allowed. Okay, well.
I think there's plenty of commercial, I mean, I think one way of answering it is I think there are plenty of commercial uses allowed for in the proposed water recreation district. Without wanting to go and make any necessary fine grain changes to the list of conditional permitted uses. That's one way of, that's one way of answering it.
Does that person who raised that comment, does he just need a little more education?
He might find that difficult to accept, but, um.
I mean, sometimes people just need to look a little deeper with a little assistance as to what the parameters really are.
Yeah.
Well, I think making miscellaneous manufacturing conditional use isn't, isn't a bad thing. Probably a good thing.
It's all right. Okay.
Yeah.
That's everybody.
It's not prohibited.
I think that's, I, I, I think I'm a little uncomfortable with kind of like just picking through these and saying, oh, I love that one. But, you know, I mean, not without Brandy actually, because I feel like they're, you know, I feel like each one of these, there's, there's some rationale for why you could say yes or why you would not say yes. So, um, you know, if we were going to do that, I feel like we would have to like reexamine every, you know, sort of reexamine every use.
Yeah, that's part of the reason why I was going back out.
The rationale for the zoning, you know?
You have to back out some distance before you can really see it in context. And I think that's important to do.
I agree. I think that's important to do and maybe, so maybe we're not ready to deal with uses tonight. But I do think that we should think about, I don't think we should be restricted to this. I think, you know, we put this together a little piecemeal and I think having spent fun listening to people, it made me think a little bit about the rationale from the districts. So, you know, I think that we can rethink the uses.
Okay. And I think that we should because the public has given us some comments and we should review it.
Yeah, but I, I also think rather than making hard and fast decisions tonight, I mean, if you want to mull it and think about it with reference to the rationale and maybe, you know, we've got some time, I don't think it's urgent that we make all these changes. So we can see how this sits and talk to Brandy and, you know, make some decisions later. There's no pressure to finalize everything tonight. And I like your point. I think it's well taken that when you start picking away at things and forgetting why things got.
Right. And I think this comes up at my job often because sometimes, you know, individual, in my case, students will bring something up that might be a problem for them, but it's not necessarily a problem when you're looking at how you're going to apply a policy.
Right. So it's that.
I don't want to be reactive to each of these individual things. I kind of feel like we need to look at the aggregate of these comments and look for, you know, where the same thing is being said multiple times, maybe?
Yes.
Or where there's something where, you know, you do take the reflective time to actually consider, is that matching the rationale?
I wouldn't.
Oh, you're, yeah.
We're about to blow up now.
All right, anyway, so. Based on my conversations, based on my feelings and my conversations with Brandy, she and I have talked about the mixed-use district needing some clarification as to its purpose and the uses. And I think, sorry, just going to sleep.
Yeah.
And then the other one is the water recreation district was kind of a new district. It's trying to accomplish a couple of things. So I think it's, that identity is not real clear either. So I think that those are two districts that we do need to spend some time on and we can do that with her.
I did a quick tour of these and categorized them based on what area people commented on mixed use and water recreation, like you said, were the ones that were easiest to capitalize on, a lot of the comments.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, so are you a case?
Yeah.
I, I agree. There's that age-old problem of, are you, is it the exception to the rule that you're looking at? Or is it a meaningful thing that means that it's time to amend the rule? And so that's what we're really weighing here to some extent. And plenty of time, something like this can come along and look perfectly reasonable when you're zoomed right in on top of it. But when you zoom back out again, you go.
Right. No, it's not the point of the.
Right. So I think, I think sometimes just having some time to contemplate that is good. And I hate the point that, um, in fact, it's mixed use and water recreation that, you know, bring this up. These kinds of zoning districts, mixed use by its very nature and something like water recreational, which is new and specific to our program here in Rattleboro, is, you know, there's some learning that needs to be done around what that actually entails. You, something like water recreations, like what does that mean? You know?
Because it's a new district.
Because it's a new district.
Right, and it's, it's.
And it's not, it's not immediately apparent from this label that it's, that it allows a broad range of commercial uses.
Just to go back to the earlier thing, is there anything we need to actually vote on for this West Rattleboro Village Center?
No.
Tonight, no.
Tell us about it.
Wow, that was all the information.
And I think, and I'm sorry I missed a part of the conversation, but do you think, and it might not be for the March 2nd meeting, but maybe for the March 23rd, maybe it'll happen sometime in between there, but trying to clarify the identity of these districts to get your feedback from so we can work with Brandy. Brandy and I can work through it, propose kind of their identities and maybe that will help us go through the uses?
Yes.
I mean, I know the purpose statement kind of.
It's all right.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I think that would be helpful. I think the other thing that would help me would be to, to, to have this, to be able to compare the, um, the boundaries of the water and recreation district with the, what you're talking about with the, um.
The river corridor?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Yeah, in this, in this area, you know, yeah, we can do that.
We can do that.
Yeah, that's fine. That would be good. That would be illustrative of the, what is really the, um.
The constraints, right.
The, the control and regulatory framework is actually not ours, not the wa, not the river, with the water recreational designation, it's the state's river corridor designation.
Right, and it seems sort of absurd to be creating zoning, a different type of zoning in the, in an area that might be considered that, that where you can actually build. I mean, it seems like it may, it may make sense to sync that up. It'd be interesting to look at, but the caution there is that the river corridor really only applies to properties that are under Act 250 jurisdiction. And so while this is one of them, not everything in the water recreation is subject to Act 250. So it is just, it's useful for this particular parcel.
Right. When it gets, yeah, it's, it gets, it's, it's helpful once you get to the point where, you know, you can sit and just picture in your head, you know, all these met boundaries. But not all water recreational districts are going to be as impacted by river corridor as this particular one is. So a different water recreational area somewhere else in town is less impacted by river corridor.
Right. Right, which takes us back to understanding the rationale for what this zone is and the point of it.
Exactly. And arguably.
And what the benefits are.
And this is also somewhat of an outlier to get back to the exception versus, the exception to the rule rather than, you know, it's an outlier in a sense that it's dominated by Act 250 permitted, um, activity.
And.
Just, it was just, just sort of a freaky history of this little.
Yeah.
Section.
And do other towns have this district and has Brandy come across that? And, and again, a lot of, in the early days, rivers were the, the place where commercial stuff was established. They were the.
Right.
The, the, the.
It's not.
Byway, so to speak. And so.
Right. It's not true of the settlement patents for this particular neighborhood, for want of a better term. In fact, what's fascinating about this is that all the built form in this particular neighborhood is actually pretty young.
Yes.
So 1980s even would be, maybe the Tom and, the old Tom and Sally's steel building is a little older, but not hugely so, maybe 70s.
I was thinking of the whole district because we have it downtown too. I mean.
We don't have water recreation.
We have water recreation at the junction of West, the West River and the Connecticut River and May Patney Road. And, yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying that the purpose, the, I guess, really looking back at page two dash 44. I mean, we do have the purpose of the district. And so that is, that is the point of the district. In some cases, this, here, these commercial buildings, I think, are a little bit of an anomaly.
Yes, I think they are.
Actually, so.
What I'd say is that they're anomalous with, um, they're anomalous in two different ways. They're anomalous when compared to other areas of town that we are proposing as being in water recreational.
Most of them are undeveloped or they've got a recreational use.
Yeah. And they are anomalous in the sense that, um, they are relatively recent suburban style commercial strip type development of a type and a nature that we would probably prefer not to see built in the contemporary planning context. In other words, if this was still a farmer's field and we had completed this new land use regulation process, we wouldn't be kindly disposed to this kind of development. So while I am acknowledging the property owner's concerns and think it's important that they are able to articulate what their concerns and what their issues are, but it's very, you know, I, I think without wanting to become, you know, too critical, it's not, it's not a form of development that we're looking to encourage in these areas.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's why.
And now that we're actually revisiting this.
Or just because we don't think the location is right.
It just doesn't fit the char.
It sprawls along Route 30.
Right. It's a character issue, not a good, bad character, you know? It's just, it's not the character of the neighborhood that we would want to see there if we had a choice. Right?
And as a, it's kind of a entrance to the town.
Yes, it's a gateway to the town. It's an important, um, nat, set of natural assets there that are important to preserve and extend wherever possible.
And why, so actually, why, why don't we have this district just extending all the way along the river up to the boundary of?
There's really not much land.
What you're sort of not seeing.
It's, it's all kind of.
It's all.
It's just.
It's.
That's the river.
So the, essentially, the properties.
Yeah, there's no parcels there. Okay.
Yes, that is, that is the end of kind of developable land on that side of the river.
I think even saying developable land is kind of, you know, it's only developable at this point because there's a dam in Townsend. I mean, if not for that dam, it wouldn't be developable because it would be flooding naturally and the river would be moving, right? Because that's pretty much the only storage area there is before you hit the Connecticut.
Yeah.
Besides what's already filled in the meadows.
Yeah. I mean, the reality is now that both the Connecticut and the West are controlled. And, you know, that their level adjusts within a range. And assuming that the dams hold, which is a good.
And there's money to maintain them.
Yeah. Then.
There's a few sections of that Route 30 that have flooded though.
Oh, it's not infrequent that, um, that the ice jam kind of backs up across, over the area that is now the playing fields and the part, yeah, all the way around that bend.
Just west or north or whatever direction, that is just a little further out too. Past the old Tom and Sally's.
Oh, yeah.
But before the.
Yeah, it gets really eerie this time of year, actually.
Yeah.
You can drive it and, because the ice has kind of formed over and around the rocks and it's, yeah, it's pretty weird. So.
So for the purposes of tonight, are we comfortable leaving it in the water and recreation and then we can have a broader discussion of the uses? Yeah, I feel like, I feel like, I mean, as Kate said, it's like we, it does seem like those two zoning districts sort of need to be revisited.
For me going into this, there was just surprising, there were surprisingly few questions about residential, um, you know, looking at this.
Yep.
There were quite a few about mixed use, um, water and recreation, and, and a few that were just sort of generally in the industrial spectrum too.
Okay.
I, I had a, I don't know how much time, we have, this will be my first one, but I was going to ask, um, would it make sense to kind of go through, I think you had maybe like a list of ones that particularly stood out for you?
Yeah.
And maybe we could just spike which ones those are and choose where to focus our questions in our time?
Sounds great, Kate.
Yeah, it's good, yeah.
Um, I was looking at, uh, questions nine and ten from the breakfast, um, so that's, uh, Canal Street, um, looking at the Canal Street area. Then, um, on the downtown meeting of February 5th, there was, um, a preference for Belmont Street to remain residential, let's in the mixed use.
What numbers are that's?
It's number one under.
Bottom of the last page.
Very last one, thank you. Those are the ones that I kind of picked out for tonight.
So nine, and what was the other?
Nine, ten.
Nine, ten.
And then the left.
And then there's another one, um, that we've talked about, it didn't really come up in, um, comments, but the underlying zoning for the area that's, uh, the Retreat Farm and Grafton Village Cheese, that's, we can talk a little bit about that.
Yep.
That's the underlying, it's, 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 it's an institutional.
PUD.
It's in the institutional zoning district.
Um, can we do the other two first and then go to nine and ten, because I think nine and ten is longer.
Nine and ten are longer.
Okay. And, um, apologize to the wind chill factor, it'd be really good if we tug at getting out of here at eight, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that you.
I missed some news briefing about some Arctic freeze tonight or something.
Oh, yeah, gotta be way below zero.
Yeah, yesterday was just a figment of your imagination.
Do you need a ride?
You want a tunnel.
I can give you a ride.
No, no, I drove, I drove. I'm fine, thank you. The heat is on.
Okay, so Belmont Street?
Um, Belmont Street.
Where did we put that?
That's the very last comment.
So we're all good with that? Does everyone need, does anyone need help to know where Belmont Street is before Sue gets there?
Uh.
Zeroing it pretty fast.
By the hospital.
I can't, I can't go faster than this.
Right.
It's south of the hospital.
Yes.
Belmont Avenue.
Yes, Belmont.
Belmont Ave.
Did I write Belmont Street?
You did write Belmont Street.
Preference for Belmont Street to remain residential, not mixed use.
Okay, so this is the area that, this is the hospital, this is the corner with Canal Street, um, we've suggested basically from one corner of Lexington Avenue all the way, um, before you kind of hit the hill on Belmont Street, for it to be mixed use, which would open it up to a lot of commercial restaurants, retail. Um, part of our thinking for doing that was that we know that there's a couple of , uh, doctor's offices here, um.
Yeah, in fact, you can tell from the, um, basically you can tell from the parking lots, all the, all the gray suggests it's already a doctor's office, basically.
It's, um, but if you go to street level view, it kind of quickly goes residential, to be honest.
Yes, it does.
Well, all was residential at one point, it's just been slowly taken over by doctor's offices.
Yeah, so this is, um.
Pediatric.
Used to be pediatric, it's, I'm not sure if it still is. I don't know about the red building, it used to be my doctor's. It's still, it's still.
Okay.
Who delivered my twins.
All right.
Is this the new?
Well, they did a good job.
They did a good job. Um, but then it's pretty resident, well.
Right, I think that might be the last one.
It's this one.
Yeah, that's the last one.
And then.
So the concern is that, is that mixed use goes all the way up the street?
Yeah. Yeah, they, mixed use kind of goes to kind of the edge of the hospital property.
And, and, and the reasoning was maybe because since it's across from the hospital, that would be, you know, that would create more options for that street?
I think that was part of the thought, well, you know, there might be more doctor's offices or that kind of services. Talking to people from the neighborhood, it was, and it wasn't a whole lot, but the feeling was that should be out on Canal Street, you know, if there's going to be retail or there's plenty of spaces.
The other side of the coin is that this is a residential neighborhood and we should be protecting residential neighborhoods.
Yeah.
That seems reasonable.
And that seems very reasonable.
What I thought was interesting, and I need to check with Brandy on this, um, she had created this map, and I need to check our records too, which has our existing zoning underneath, and the hospital PUD actually seems to take into account those doctor's offices. And so if that's the case, we need to make sure that we get the hospital PUD right, and those doctor's offices that are on the corner of Belmont and Canal, or across from the hospital would.
Would be institutional.
Institution.
So you're gonna limit the change of use to the underlying, area underlining the hospital?
So you think this little tan box here is actually part of that?
It's showing as part of the PUD, yeah.
Yeah, because that white line.
In which case it needs to stay, because that's part of, would be part of.
It's not the deal anyway, it's not, it's not up for grabs, basically.
And then we'd make the rest residential.
Right.
Yeah, that seems.
That, yeah.
Anybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it just seems kind of strange to be stretching the mixed use up the street.
I'm glad that people spoke up. I think that's the purpose of the meetings.
Now, I just, this is more enough for you and me. But I'm just gonna say it out loud so both of us can remember. We want to document, we want to, we want to document really carefully, you know, each one of these steps that we, where we change things, so that there's a record of responsiveness, for want of a better term. Okay, great.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it sounds like the first, the people who made these comments are okay with the doctor's offices, but just don't want any more retail kind of.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Really change the whole character of that neighborhood.
Their neighborhood.
That's a, and it's a, you know, to that extent, that they're very different uses. You know, it's one thing to have a doctor's office and something altogether to have, you know, a store or a restaurant.
Yeah, and those are all out on the, um, Canal Street, so.
Do you think that the house looks like it's about four of them? It's really weird.
It's called a ramp. Leaning tower.
Looks like London like the pocket.
Okay, so done. Woo, I love the easy ones. What's next? So we're gonna do, um, we're gonna look at an institutional. So if you recall, we had our planned unit developments as existingly, as they exist today, create a change in zoning district. So we were challenged to try to fit them into underlying zoning. A lot of our PUDs, the hospital, the schools, Austen School, that kind of thing, are, are institutions, so we created the institution district. But then we had a couple of others, like the Delta Campus, like the Retreat Farms and Grafton Village, which have a PUD, but are not in an institutional type use. Um, in the Delta Campus, we put that into the rural residential, although their PUD, their planned unit development plan remains in force. We just, for map purposes, we said that's most like the rural residential zoning district, and that's what surrounds it.
Is somebody challenging that?
And where's the Delta Campus? I can't remember.
Going to Guilford on Route 5?
Yeah, Route, off of Route 5, south of town.
Right, okay.
Kate, Kate, do you, we should.
Do you know that?
Keep on feeling bad that we're assuming that she's an expert.
I have an image in my mind.
It's where Commonwealth Darius?
Yeah, it's like a farm campus, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's on a hillside, yeah, just south of town.
It's right up here.
Less than a mile past the highway.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
Where it comes into play is that we have a provision in the draft regulations that basically says, if you have a planned unit development and you want to, you know, change it up, you want to do something different, then you either need to do it in accordance with your master plan that you have now for your planned unit development, or you can add in uses that are in the underlying zoning district. Um, so that's where the underlying zoning district of a PUD could be.
Telling, you know, important.
Important.
And just to finish on that point a little bit, it's more important now because we're changing the PUD process than it was in the, or is under the current regulations, because a PUD is its own zoning district effectively now. So you could endlessly amend a PUD now, and the question of what the underlying zoning wouldn't necessarily come up very directly. Whereas what we're proposing is the, the link back to the underlying zoning is a little bit more direct. So it becomes a more important question effectively.
So this is the, uh, the PUD for the Grafton.
Cheese.
Cheese.
Yes.
And what are the uses in the PUD?
It's a pretty long and, um.
Broad list.
Broad list. It covers the light industry of making the cheese, some campuses of retail, I think professional offices, um.
Restaurant.
Restaurant, open space associated with the, the aspects of the, um, larger parcel.
Educational.
Educational activity. It's pretty broad.
Institution.
Lodging.
Lodging, right.
Lodging that's associated with any educational.
Right, activity. So, yeah.
And we propose that the underlying zoning would be.
Right now, it's proposed to be institutional, but we were feeling like it's not, it's not institutional in the sense of being a hospital or a college campus or a school, um, so it doesn't really fit the other.
Right.
It's, it's not an institution.
Institutional, but it's used.
Right, its uses are not, its uses are, by area, it's one of its biggest uses, probably open space and agricultural land. Um, by use, the single most dominant, biggest thing there is the, um, is the cheese factory itself, which in the contemporary kind of context for development in Vermont is regarded, um, it ties back to agriculture and, agriculture and food production, so it has kind of a slightly privileged position, say compared to.
Value added product from farm.
Right, so it's different, if it was a plastic, if, if it was a factory making plastic buckets, we wouldn't extend it the same kind of consideration, right? It's a specific kind of facility associated with locally produced milk, basically. So, which is, so.
If you wanted to change the underlying zoning to not be institutional, but to be.
Well, we have sort of two funny choices. It's rural residential, which is the zoning district to the, to the, well, to the north and to the south, whatever that is.
What's up with.
Southwest.
Although that is all conservative.
Yeah, and, or it could be rural residential. Right?
Wait, didn't you say, you said rural residential?
Did I say rural residential twice? Rural residential. Or.
Could stay institutional.
It could stay institutional.
Those, those were the things that we were thinking of.
So rural residential allows for the same type of agricultural.
Yes.
Commerce?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, it's, it's more, more accommodating. I mean, I'd say.
And more appropriate for this particular.
Yes, it's more consistent with the neighborhood or however you want to define that sort of ridgeline.
Take in the ski jump too?
Eh, no, that's not part of this property and.
Is it?
Well, it looks like it on this.
Is this it?
Yeah.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it is that.
Uh, it's part, it's, I think it starts up here, right?
Right.
And it's down there.
But that's the cornfields.
Oh, you're asking if the parcel takes into account? I don't believe so.
Is it part, is it?
It's not part of the PUD.
Don't believe so.
It's colored that way though.
It is conserved, I'm struggling to think about the parcel boundary, so.
It looks to me that, like, there's more options if it's institutional.
Yeah, rural residential doesn't allow, um, much at all, right, in the industry, although it does allow skiing facilities.
No, I don't think it would be, well, yeah, there's, there's more, there's more flexibility as it, if it's institutional than if it's rural residential, based on how the uses are established. One, anomalies of veterinary services, lawn, garden or farm supply sales, open market or market shops.
So you're saying?
So Caroline.
This is all off the outdoor.
So ski jump is here?
Bed or breakfast.
And this is a PUD we're talking about.
Or in. But other than those, there's actually more flexibility if it's institutional?
I agree, I think, for me, it's more of the, is the ownership of it being institutional enough to make it? For me, it's, it's, it's more of the, is it an institution and therefore should it be in the institutional district? I wasn't looking at it from a use perspective, although the uses are important, given the.
The uses of the practical effects, so.
And to me, it's not so much a question of like what it is now, but what it could be, you know? I mean, that property for hundreds of years has been an institution, so, you know, there's like mul, multiple buildings, there, you know, so I feel like there's the poten, there's the potential for all kinds of things to occur there. So why would you change the underlying use to something that would be what seems like more limiting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I might need clarification. When we're, um, when we're talking about this, are we talking about we need to, um, clarify the Grafton Cheese, the ski jump and the retreat area as a group? Or could we look at this splitting in, in some way that makes more sense?
Okay.
In terms of parcels.
Yeah, let's try and answer that, that's a good question. Okay, so.
In terms of parcels, ski jump is this one right here.
Yeah.
So that is separate, that's a separate parcel.
Yeah.
And that, sorry, that light green, this, is this new zoning or the old zoning?
No, this is, this is old zoning.
That's so confusing.
Do you want to see the new zoning?
Yeah, because I.
This is the proposed zoning. Okay, so that light green is rural residential.
Rural residential.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is, um, this green dot under here is Grafton Village Cheese right there.
Right.
But all of that yellow, is that part of the PUD?
This is.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, it.
But the ownership actually is different, so this is what's complicated. So, am I right, Sue? Down here, this banana colored area, down here, that's.
Yeah, sorry, I'm assuming it's like.
That's the actual retreat, retreat.
That's right.
Right. This other.
That is owned by the Brattleboro.
Yeah, Ann Marie.
Yeah.
Right.
Brattleboro Retreat.
So this other part that we're looking at is formerly the land of the retreat. It was the farm that was associated with the institution, and then it got snapped off and bought by yet another nonprofit.
The Wyndham Foundation.
Wyndham Foundation, which is the entity that owns Grafton Cheese.
And those two institutions share the PUD?
No, they.
They have separate.
They have separate PUDs.
And separate.
Right.
Wyndham Foundation, though, owns, do they own several of the parcels though, around in this yellow?
I think they may.
What about all the trails?
That's the town, they like.
That's the town. A lot of the trails are.
Brattleboro. Brattleboro Retreat, sorry. So that's Brattleboro Retreat, this is Brattleboro Retreat, this is Wyndham Foundation.
Right.
Wyndham Foundation owns a lot of the land in the back.
Yes, it's, it's owned rural residential.
But the PUD is for that parcel only? Their, their PUD is for that parcel only or for?
Yes.
Yes.
The PUD associated with the Grafton Cheese development is for.
And without, it, it, I really badly run the risk of.
No, no, no.
That's this parcel.
That's Brattleboro Retreat, I think.
Done that. Yeah, it's a retreat.
That's where the, that's woods where the trails are across from the ski area.
Oh, sorry, Wyndham Foundation, because Wyndham Foundation owns.
Yeah, that.
Owns the.
Harris Hill owns the, yeah.
Ski jump, are they on the right away to? Ski jump, are they on the right away to?
Maybe I can back up. So there is kind of a planned unit development in this whole area. There, and it's kind of snapped out by parcels. So you could do certain things on this
Right.
parcel. You can do certain things on this parcel. So while it's under two ownership, there is one PUD, I believe.
Yes, there are two owners, but one PUD.
This is kind of making me think that we all want to think about this more.
I don't. I'm, I feel pretty confident that should be institutional.
Um, well.
I mean, I don't.
Yeah.
For me, it was, it stood out because it wasn't
Ownership, isn't it?
It wasn't institutional and, you know, and like a hospital or it's kind of evolved over time.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say that the likelihood of it becoming a campus style setting with institutional uses, like a school or a hospital or a nursing home or something are extremely remote.
But there might be other foundational uses.
I'm, I'm looking at the uses under institutional. I'm not like thinking of the institution because that's not what the zoning is actually saying. And there are more options under institutional for conditional and permanent uses than there are if you make it rural residential. So given that it's on thirty, given that there's multiple buildings on it, you know, I think it makes sense to maintain it as an institutional zoning because then there's more flexibility in what it might become going forward.
So is, uh, well, maybe I can tell you, is your hesitation to call it institutional because institutional brings to mind some other, um, thing, you know, like hospital, uh, school, or is there, was there a question or something that came specifically to this property?
No, I think it's always been a lingering one from when we put the districts together. And when you read the purpose of the institutional districts on, district on page two dash forty-seven, it says it includes various major institutions, primarily educational healthcare facilities.
So it's not brought along with the purpose?
Yeah.
For me, that's why it always stood out.
Although the case could be made that Wyndham Foundation is an institution. And even though these uses seem incongruous, they are all economically developed institutions, like the purposes.
Yeah, but I think we're talking about actual use.
Tourist related economic.
Yeah, but that's when, I mean, that's when we think it's more useful to describe it and use, and apply something else, actually. I mean, I think
But I think you could, I think the argument could be made. It's, it's, Wyndham Foundation, they are somewhat of an institution. I just wanted to point it out. This was not really one that came forward from anybody else. It was just always kind of lingering out there. Brandy and I are like, eh, does it really?
Hop from one foot to the other, huh?
Well, how do we feel about that, darling?
I don't know. I mean, I like to support the fact that that could be used in a number of different ways, you know? And it's a, it's again part of a gateway from that direction, but it also is potential there for, I think, there is potential, I think, there for economic development, um, of a sort. I mean, the cheese factory, I mean, it's there. You can see that economic development and it's a tourist destination. You can stop and, um, go to a little shop in there, stuff, lots of Vermonty kind of stuff in it. And I don't know, similar along that corridor would feel bad to me. As long as it wasn't developed like, you know, the strip mall kind of stuff.
Right.
I mean, the Wyndham Foundation made a, I mean, that was very controversial for a while and they made sure that they were in keeping with the farm
Theme.
Theme there, you know, and I think going forward that would be important. I think people would speak out about that like they did in the past. If something different were to really happen there. I mean, there was a plan to put the nursing home down there or up on the hill behind somewhere at one point. You know, and, and that was, don't mind.
So what is in up on your list, Sue?
It's not, it's one of Brandy and I was talking about.
But anyways.
All right.
So it doesn't seem to me to be a big support to change. So why don't we just leave that? Unless
I mean, their PUD is, is governing and there is opportunities there, so.
Right. It's kind of a fairly geeky thing to obsess about, you know?
I think, I think we should bring up the issues of nine and ten and, and leave us with those to ponder. Because they're complicated.
Yeah.
And we only have ten minutes.
That's the best way to deal with complications.
So we're keeping that as institutional?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
I wouldn't mess with that.
If you want, I'll lobby you even.
Lobby me? I don't feel that strongly. I'm good, thanks. Okay, so to leave you with lots of things to think about.
Yeah.
I'll leave you a couple of things. We'll be back in a week to think about it. So, um, there was we received, you might recall when we were doing this, we had a lot of consternation about the number of districts here.
Yep.
Um, but actually the criticism that we faced was that there were, I guess, too many down this way. There was concern about the mixed use district and that, you know, this really isn't, um, the residential. Well, there is residential character along Canal Street. There is a lot of retail.
Or just commercial, just commercial type stuff happening.
Yeah, and so, um
And so the change to residential, that's the change that's controversial on one side of the street?
Mm-hmm, here, um, and also here.
Through there, yeah.
Um, and there was a feeling that the mixed use shouldn't necessarily go down Brook Street and all back in here. And it should be more focused along Canal Street.
And so there weren't any comments as you go further down along Canal?
We didn't, um
Didn't encounter so many down there at all, actually.
No.
Just kind of funny.
And then what is just further down? It goes to the
There's a little mixed use neighborhood here because it's more of a transition and then the service center.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so back up to the area you're talking about.
So what we were trying to do here was to reestablish kind of the residential. So there, there are some commercial uses there that have, um, not been sympathetic with the built form of residential. You have some one-story buildings. There's some pretty iffy commercial development that has the potential of really changing the neighborhood. So by choosing residential, we were trying to reestablish this as a residential neighborhood. The question is, is that realistic? Is that?
Okay, so the thought also was that we wanted to make it more residential, to put the pressure on commercial areas.
Yes.
Yep.
And have some development pressure there.
Yes.
And the alternative to this is to have it all be mixed use? Is that the alternative that?
To sort of accept, to sort of accept the status quo. Through the design guidelines that we've got for mixed use, preserve the residential form where it's present. If anything was to, you know, some of those more contemporary, don't really want to say that word, but some of the, some of the single story buildings that might not conform to that residential appearance, if they were to disappear, then they'd have to be replaced with buildings that were more sympathetic to the residential nature of the mixed use neighborhood. So, you know, it's sort of a question about whether, how, how far do you want to push it? By, by sort of showing it as residential here, what we're really trying to say is we're concerned even about the use. And it's one of those questions then, we would be creating quite a large number of non-conforming properties.
Which is always problematic.
Some people view it as not problematic, yeah. So, um, by just accepting really what's on the ground now and calling it mixed use, with the right kind of application of mixed use guidelines or, uh, rules, we should be able to preserve the residential nature of the neighborhood, if not its actual residential activity.
So are we talking about the entire green area or are we talking about the properties, the original parcels fronting Canal Street? Just that, that parcel?
I think making a kind of a strip along Canal that would be mixed use.
All the way down to
That's what it looks like they said.
Yeah, to that corner there.
Good. So the, but, yeah, I mean, I think it becomes, do we care about the uses there or do, do we want it to be residential uses? Or are we willing, or do we, do we care more about the use or do we care more about the building form?
Right.
Because if it's a building form question, there are regulations in the mixed use district where you could allow some commercial uses, but you're still restricting building size and the form of the building.
Yeah, I, you know, what I'd say almost is it's kind of like a hierarchy. The ultimate would be to achieve residential use in residential buildings. It's a residential form matched with residential use. It might be the case that it's already too far gone in a sense. And then we're better off trying to just preserve the residential form and not worry so much about the use.
Especially since there's some concerns about that and feedback.
Right, yeah.
Are there, and there might be, if we looked at it, there might be small little areas that are clearly residential that we might want to preserve and a broader area that could be mixed use.
There may be.
Yeah, I think the depth question off Canal Street becomes kind of more interesting in that way.
This is pretty much, this is one parcel deep here and then it slopes down to the wetstone. So, and this is Goojer's. And there's a couple of multifamily. This is Domino's. I think there's a plumbing shop. Um, the car lot's farther up.
The cow washes.
I mean, so this, this actually is a strip right here where there is a fair amount of commercial use here.
Is it the farm or is it this side of the street?
I think it's both sides of Canal, probably this whole area.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, there's a lot more. It's, it's pretty dense residential, but it's, there's offices here or there, but this side is
That side's more residential.
Can you do street view for me, Sue?
I can do street view. So we'll start at the corner of Burr Street. So this is already in the mixed use here, all the way to the corner of Brook Street, so. So this is primarily multifamily residential. This is, this is still in the mixed use district, all the way till we, I think we get the corner of Brook Street. So I think this might be where the mixed use ends.
Yes.
And then it becomes residential. So you've got
Maybe street view is not so good today.
I think it's, well, it's just slow in this room. So you've got Domino's. I, there might be an office or two in here, but I think
I'm trying to think, yeah.
In a house, though.
There's a cup.
Yeah, it's in, it's in houses. Uh, this is a Ollie Plumbing, I think, or
Yeah, it's a plumbing joint. And then that's a house and that's a house.
It, it seems reasonable. Also, if you consider that Canal, that Canal Street sort of functions as this artery from ninety-one into the center of downtown. You know, it's, that's never, the street itself, the traffic on the street is not, you know, really residential friendly, honestly?
Yeah, I, I guess, but the concern is, well, let me put it this way. I think there might be potential to have it look more like that stretch of Western Avenue that we're going to move to in a second. That is, um, de-emphasize the, um, autofocus nature of the, of the uses and particularly things like the signs and so forth. So if you compare, you know, Western Avenue to Canal Street, there's quite a bit of office use on Western Avenue. But the, um, way in which the signs are done and a bunch of other subtle things means that it feels less auto-oriented and more residential and neighborhood-y than, than Canal Street. And a lot of the, um, activity on Canal Street, you know, is trying to attract the attention of the passing motorists, I guess. So there's sort of a subtle balance difference between the two. If we were to implement meaningful mixed use language, over time, we could preserve the residential character with, while, you know, without really changing too much. So it's an appearance thing.
Yeah.
I think the traffic is okay. I mean, yeah, it's not, it's not a super, yeah, right. It's noisy and it's, some of those buildings are pretty close to the street, so it's not, um, you know, there are some limitations, I guess. But the idea here is to try and really pull it back from being in the, sort of inadvertently auto-oriented in its activity base. And I think it's sort of right on the edge. You know, things like that.
Right, but you could do that if you zone it mixed use all the way down to downtown, right?
Right, yeah.
So that's more of a design question than
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Than a use question.
Right, right.
It's also, isn't that close to our, um, district?
Yes, there's, this is, uh, this loop is, this Horton Homestead and this is as well, Clark Canal.
Yeah, and we really want to try and enhance that experience as much as we can.
And these, um This is a mixed use, I don't know why it's not showing. This is mixed use. So this is Three Stones
That's right.
Over here. And then these are pretty much, they go one parcel deep, so but the back part of, of Clark Street is in the residential.
Right. And the hope there is that over time you could see more sensitive development, you know, say opposite three stones there.
Yeah, we talked about that before.
That would be, you know, more residential in character, if not actual use, yeah.
You know, the thing is, is that we're going from the existing zoning and probably the reason there's some development. Sorry, we've got some commercial in there. It's pretty much runs from kind of the South Main area is commercial office, but then it, it's a commercial district. So the area here.
Here.
This area pretty much is running as a commercial zoning district right now. And you can see the results of some of it with, you know, car sales and that kind of thing.
Right.
And so we're, the idea was to pull back.
So it's either going to be pulled back to residential or it's going to be pulled up to mixed use. Well, I think we should review that.
Yeah, something to think about.
Come, come with our opinions for next week.
And then point number, was it?
Nine, ten.
Ten was for Western Avenue. So kind of, I think, think the idea was, maybe I'm reading too much into it, but it was like exit two down for that to be a mixed use zoning district.
Oh, going down into town, not going the other way? It doesn't say.
I, it doesn't say and
And what was that person thinking of? Because those are two very distinctive, when you go west from the exit two, it's very different than the other.
I'm not sure. So, well, we could look at all of Western Avenue as, as mixed use. Western Avenue this way right now is, this is all existing residential.
Yep.
I think, I was assuming they were talking this part of Western Avenue because it went from residential office zoning district to residential. That being said, we are still allowing office uses and that kind of thing and
We were concerned just about the, again, the residential look of that neighborhood, again, as it's a, it doesn't have the canastries.
And there was Who live there and who want to maintain.
Yeah, and there was a simplification of that. We got rid of that residential office and instead we allow office. As a conditional use in the residential, so.
Right.
I wouldn't change that. I don't know how everybody else is, we want to decide on that now.
Yeah, I'm a little unsettled by the notion of doing more relaxation along Western Avenue.
I am as well. It's, it's a big change.
It's a very big change.
You know, whereas on Canal Street, there is a history.
And actually even the gas station, that was gas station, is now Beauty Salon. beauty salon, I mean, that's even less of a commercial look, because they chose to preserve it in a very nice way, so, I mean, the avenue, as I call it, just has a nicer look to it that is more residential, even though it has office uses.
Yeah.
Many, and even Hilton Home, which is like an institution of its sort.
I wouldn't change that.
Almost historic, in a lot of senses.
Yeah, we might want to give more thought to the Canal next week.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would give that.
Okay.
Well...
I will adjourn, if you have nothing else.
I'll second that.
Keep making a note of it, huh?
Eight of six.
Who seconded it?
Liz. Liz.
Thank you very much, everybody.
You're welcome.